All right, I'd like to open the meeting. It is 6 o'clock. I do this once a year when there's a board reorganization. So the first order of business is to nominate a chair. Do I hear a nomination?
I'd like to nominate Amelia Lee's chair.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay? Extentions? Good luck! If the meeting is all yours, you can usually have it...
Vice chair?
Yeah, you usually have a vice chair.
Okay, I would like to have someone make the motion to nominate a vice chair.
I nominate Frank Valenti. Please stand up.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, agenda review and disposition. Is there anything you need to add?
Just under other business, I need to add lunch pricing.
Okay. And Tonya, I'm hoping that in your principals' report, I don't know if we could talk about... We talked about the calendar, but we didn't talk about timeframes for school. Time change is different, so I'd like to have you discuss that when you give your principals' report, if you could.
Time change.
If it's gonna be... So, school didn't use to start at 8:25, so I wasn't sure if that was gonna continue or not. I just wanted to bring it back to that meeting. Minutes of March 7th... Oh, wait, before I start the meeting, I want to say thank you to Mike Waddell for his time on the board. We appreciate you. And I'd like to welcome Stephanie to the board. Happy to have you, but I didn't want Mike to go unrecognized, and I wanted to welcome Stephanie. So, thank you for bringing that up. Okay, now, minutes of March 7th.
I make a motion to accept the minutes as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Stand.
Okay.
Extentions, Stephanie? Okay. Privilege of the floor number one. Thanks for coming. Nice to see everyone. Does anyone like this speed? Yes?
I just have a question. When does the calendar... I was in here for the last meeting, so I didn't see the calendar. When does that get finalized, this session?
It was finalized last session.
Yeah.
Yep, and is it on the website yet for the next year?
I do not know if it's on our website, but I can... We can put it up on our website.
Awesome, thanks. Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone on June? Oh, yes. Hi. How are you?
First, just really quickly, I wanted to... My son is about to graduate from PES, and I wanted to just extend my thanks to this whole community. It's been incredibly supportive, and he's just really thrived, especially, you know, it's been a difficult couple of years in middle school. So, we're really, really grateful, our whole family, to the PES family and community for caring for him. I wanted to raise one point, though, that I'm hoping maybe the board can look into. And I plan on attending, hopefully, the next PRHS board meeting to bring this up there, too, because I have a child at a high school. Leading up to the local elections in March, and some of this was entirely on me, I found myself the day of the elections really, like, not quite sure who was running for school board or where to get that information. And I spent time sort of like scouring the local paper and looking on Facebook, looking on the school websites, looking on the SAU website, looking on the town website, and I discovered that that information was not readily available. At that time, I reached out to the SAU office to ask if it was possible to get a slate of candidates. And I think there was just a miscommunication, because they responded and said, "We don't... We can't endorse any candidates," which wasn't what I was looking for. I just really wanted to know who was running, so I could do some research as a, you know, as a resident of Plymouth. And it just really, in talking to other folks, it really raised my awareness that there's a gap about that information. We do have information, you know, about town positions and town elections, and I know that they do a face-to-face event for candidates to speak that's recorded and shared on the Penny Baker Channel. But there really isn't anything similar across the SAU, and I recognize that, you know, more and more people are becoming interested in local elections and in school board elections. And I know that that's complicated, but I also feel like the best way for us to kind of serve the community is to get that information out as broadly as possible. So, I'm just hoping that the board may be over the next... Before the next election, maybe working with other school boards in the administrative unit could try and pull something together to make that information more readily available for the residents of our town.
Yeah, I think that's a great suggestion. I know that one of the goals, as the chairman of the board, is to bridge the gap between the town and the school. So, I don't see why we wouldn't be able to participate in the candidate night that the town puts.
I think it's the League of Women Voters that puts it on. I don't think it's kind of a town. I think it has to be sponsored by an independent organization.
Right.
That's right.
Yeah, so we can touch base with who I would need to contact, so that next year, that can happen, for sure.
Can we just ask, where does that get announced?
So, it's different. It's different for every town, and some of the towns, they... Like, in Camden, they have to sign up at the town hall. So, it's just part of that piece. In Holderness, they sign up at the town hall. At Thornton School, they sign up at the Thornton School Building. For Plymouth, in the high school, they sign up at the SAU. We can easily post those on the web... I would go with your school websites instead of the SAU websites, because sometimes folks get confused about which districts belong where and who's running for what. It's easy for us to do, to put up there. But as far as any candidate nights, that's usually put on by independent organizations or groups of parents or anything like that. Quite honestly, we really haven't had...
Interest.
...a lot of interest for a school board, ever. So, that's something we can easily do.
Yeah, did you announce anything for the PTA, Jenny?
I was gonna say, we did have both Stephanie and Mike come on the PTA meeting that was held before elections, and they did give a... But it wasn't something that if you didn't know about... We tried to get the information out, but it's... There's only so far to go.
Okay, would it be possible to look into, see if we could just have a candidate statement on the SAU website before elections?
On the Plymouth website? Yeah.
And any school website?
Yeah, I can look, yeah.
I mean, I think if it... It's not an endorsement. Like, I know that the co-op has, like, a meet the candidates, where each candidate running for their board can have a statement, and it's part of, you know, what they do, just to get information out. But I don't know if that's something... I know that sometimes rules, as they apply to schools, are different.
And I know Stephanie put a letter to the editor in the writer enterprise, so that's another avenue.
And I had actually... I had thought that the school board members were a part of the town piece. I think at one point, I even told people that they were. And then I called... Had to call two people back and say that the school board members were not a part of the candidate's night.
We do the tent. Nice vote, but it was at the end.
Yeah.
So, going forward, I think it's a great suggestion. So, I appreciate you bringing it to our attention, for sure. Thank you. All right, so anyone else that would like to speak on privilege of the floor number one? No? All right, perfect, moving on. Principals' report. Tonya, I'm super excited, because I know so many good things have been happening.
So, tonight's a little different. I went for a slideshow, which, if you're sitting on this side, you're not gonna be able to see, so I suggest you slide over, because the screen is behind me. So, this is just a glance at what's been going on at Plymouth Elementary School in the last couple of months.
Surfing?
Some of the things. So, our theme for the year with the faculty and the staff is surfing, because it has felt like we were not necessarily in control of the waves that were coming at us. Sometimes the waves wash you under, and you gotta get back on the board. Sometimes you have to get back on the beach in order to figure out how to find your board. And sometimes you need a life jacket, sometimes you need a friend. So, just sort of the metaphor for the entire school year has been, how are you gonna find your board? How are you gonna ride the waves? Because they're coming at us, and that's what we need to be able to do. So, I decided to introduce it to you all as well. Kelly and I did a skit with Lori Cleary at the beginning of the school year for all the faculty, highlighting this. So, it's been a big part of...
Please do it for us.
Fire autographs, you have to coloration.
So, gives you a picture. So, for the Hundred's Day celebrations, which is a big event at Plymouth Elementary School, we've had, you know, two decades of having the Hundred's Day Museum. We also have the Hundred Items Fashion Show, where kindergarteners put a hundred items on their tee-shirt and walk down a red carpet. So, that was really fun. And then the first graders had their museum right here, and, you know, different... You had to sign up to attend and see the different exhibits, and a couple of those there that are pretty amazing. I have to point out that Clyde Webb's is this Hundred Fuzzies on a Caterpillar, and then it metamorphized into a butterfly. It was really beautiful. In third grade, we recently just had celebrating reading. We had a reading week, and there were different themes to each day of the week. Dr. Seuss Day, Inspirational Women, Power of the Illustrator, Love of Literature, and finally Favorite Author Day. And that included costumes and dressing up like your favorite character in a book, and it was fantastic. Also, as a part of that week, the third graders read to younger students in the building. And the little kids loved it, because anytime with big kids is special time. In fourth grade, they recently had the Wax Museum, which is diving into biographies. So, that included research, a visual timeline of the life events of their individual. They had to prepare a presentation, including a costume, and then there was a parent night. We had Michael Jordan, Harry Houdini, Galileo, Babe Ruth, and Harriet Tubman, a couple of the most spectacular. I love the Amelia Earhart quote, "Life is too short to just be a passenger, so get on board." And I learned that that night, so... In fifth grade, the fifth grade team has worked very hard with a number of other adults in the building to be building some social emotional skills based on the DESA Universal Screening for Social Emotional Skills. And the area that the fifth grade has worked on hardest was goal setting, and that was identified through the universal screener as something that we needed to work on. So, we had seven groups, and each group focused on a different component of goal-setting behavior, and we tried to have very hands-on activities for the kids to explore what it means to set a good goal. Beth Wilkie and I had an activity where they... Going on vacation for the week, I wanna have a good time. That's a goal, right? But it's not a specific goal. It's not very directed. So, how do you plan a goal where you're going to visit three national parks, one major city, and do one cultural event in one week? And we gave them maps and resources, and they had to plan their route, and they had to think about time and why they were going to choose each national park. So, you get a picture of what those activities were about. And each small group of kids had, I don't know, five to nine kids in it, too, so it allowed for really fantastic conversation. We're about to do our post-evaluation with those kiddos to see what they learned from all those activities, so I'm excited for that. This is a video that I'm not going to make you all watch here, but it's a video of a group of adults who get stuck on an escalator, and they just stand there, and they start yelling and saying, "Help! Help!" So, that's... All they needed to do was walk up the escalator to help themselves. So, how do you reach your goal when something unexpected happens? We've tried to embed a lot of learning for... Start off with videos and hook them in. We had Winter Olympics here at Plymouth Elementary School. Nancy Stock and the middle school teachers organized that. It was fantastic. It was a beautiful blue-sky day. We were able to shift it to... Away from the Friday, we thought it was gonna be a weather day. It turned out to be a weather day, so we moved it up a couple of days to still be able to squeeze that in. And we had some alumni come. One thing we have felt in the middle school is that the middle... We've lost... We had lost some of our culture, that our middle... Over the course of the last two years, the positive culture and excitement and the idea that we can have fun at school and build each other up. And so, we had... I invited a number of middle... Of alums to come back and hype it up a little bit and show them that it can be really fun. So, that was a wonderful day. Teachers came in costumes. Winter program was an absolute success. So, here are some pictures from that. I'd like to specifically shout out, there's a group of students who need specialized support in order to ski, and this Waterville Valley, two days before we were ready to go, threw us some curveballs around adaptive skiing. And we felt very strongly, as a building, that any kid who wanted to be on the slope should be on the slope. So, our special ed team stepped up and got everyone who wanted to be out there, out there skiing and skiing. It was an... I mean, a friend you would've loved. It was fantastic. I would like to also really thank Amy Bailey, a resident who came in and worked doing winter science with our little kiddos, our K-1, 2 kids, who didn't have as many options, and that was really wonderful. And White Mountain Karate, because they were a host location for us, which was new. And you could see there were a whole... I mean, we had... I think we had 24, 25 kids there. It's wonderful. We also had STEM as an activity here. I absolutely love this picture. I don't know if you can tell, but he's got a tee-shirt on of planets, and he's holding a marble in his hand. And then he went and ran it down, this marble run, and it was really wonderful to see mixed-grade groupings, kids exploring STEM. We also had a group come in with flight simulators, and they got to really try out flight simulators. So, Julie Panis did a wonderful job organizing that. And we were at Top Gun Gymnastics, which was new this year as well, doing some tumbling, and that was a success. So, winter program was fantastic. Thank you to Amy McKenny and Jenny Lee and Beth Wilkie for making all of that happen. Similarly, to fifth grade, sixth grade has been working on SMART goals as well, but rather than... They handled it more as a... On a student-by-student case, what is... What does each student want to handle... Want to set as a SMART goal, related much more to student skills. So, they're still working on that project, but sixth grade has picked up the DESA idea and is working on that. Would like to shout out Sarah Thompson and the work. We had... I don't know if you all came in and you saw on the wall the brackets for March Madness. The Title I Reading Crew developed this bracket system. Well, actually, it's a national program, but they adopted the national program, and all the classrooms read all 16 books, and then each class voted and who... Which book won? So, that was fantastic reading energy in the building. Just in terms of some of the projects that are going on in the building, but so not as much kid-focused right now, but just for everyone here to know, we, last August and then in October, worked with a consultant, Polly Bath, to really re-identify our core values and the work habits that we want our graduates to have upon graduation. So, there is a small group of folks who are working on rubrics associated with those work habits, visuals that will go up in the building so that they live a little more... On a more daily basis, and then launch activities and traditions that will embed those within our community. And those are the four work habits that the faculty identified. We also used... On the first day of school, we had the seventh and eighth graders also develop a list and work through ideas that they thought would be important for graduates. And so, we sifted through all of that with the seventh and eighth grade information and the faculty information to come up with these four. On March 23rd, we had Media Power Youth here, working with the fifth grade, the sixth grade, the seventh grade, and the eighth grade. They are a New Hampshire-based program that teaches social media skills to kiddos. So, fifth and sixth graders learned about their digital footprint and how whatever you post is available, and that, you know, you wanna think about your footprint and the footprints you're leaving behind for 10 years from now and all of those concerns. And then the seventh and eighth graders worked on conflict resolution through social media and why social media creates conflict, and then how to resolve that. So, I could not speak more highly of Media Power Youth. They were phenomenal. Very, very well-presented, concise, easy to work with. They were... And we had a parent night the night before that was... I think we had about six people participate in that. They're willing to do another one of those, so we'll be looking into another parent night with Media Power Youth. And then last week, we had the middle school play, Twinderella, which was an absolute success. And would like to thank Ellen Han, Annie Doyle, Jake Stevens, and Jen Bradbury for putting that on. When we were... Began to plan for Twinderella, we didn't know what was going to go on. We decided to plan, and if we had to cancel at the last minute, it was better to have the option to go than to have... To be planning that we couldn't do it. So, it was an absolute success and very, very funny. Plus lots more that I'm not gonna take up time with. Two spelling bees, Care Awards, Coffee Cart, Cultural Arts. Everyone should get on our website and look at the Cultural Arts website. It's phenomenal. We had our winter concerts. We have a group called One Big Helping Hand, and we were able to do Nano Rima with Mrs. Deloche, so... Which is a novella-writing project. So, that all has happened this winter. In terms of some projects that are going on that also don't involve students so much, the teacher teams are looking at achievement data and really setting instructional goals and achievement goals for each individual student based on multiple measures of data points. We have SAS testing, which is our state-mandated testing coming up in May, so we are preparing for that. There is a scheduling subcommittee that's working hard, because we are fine-tuning the schedule yet again. We're taking any volunteers who'd like to be a part of that. That is a beast of a job. I'm not... I'm being... I'm teasing. The third year in a row, we've done the schedule. It's a lot of work. We are going to be looking at a middle school-specific student handbook. We've... There's a group... The middle school teachers in particular feel very strongly that we need to have a student handbook that applies just to middle school around grading and some absence and tardy policies and consistency across grade levels. So, we will get back to you probably at the end of the summer with that document. Want to let you know that we are connecting with Whole Village around the possibility of getting families access to social work services in the community, and we're also working with the JPPOs, which is the Juvenile Propagation Officers regarding truancy issues, trying to scoop up our kiddos who are struggling to attend school. And there is a pretty extensive literacy focus going on within the SAU, and thinking about how we will spend some ESSER money in the future to really leverage that towards learning specifically. There was a meeting today with the elementary school principals here, and we're looking at a three-year plan to reinvest in professional development, specifically around classroom practices for teaching kids to read and write. And that's really our fundamental job. We've gotta do that well. And so, we're gonna leverage... I was... I'm going to confidently say that we're gonna leverage that money or a large piece of that in that way. Also, want to let you know that the Unified Arts Group is also looking at the way they report out in grade, and we want to make sure that, as we look at that middle school handbook, that students and families really understand how UA teachers report in grade and get a little better clarity on that for kids and families. So, that will come to you also this summer. We're pretty close to the draft of that piece. Finally, I wanted to let you know where we are with enrollment. So, this, as you can see over my head, this... These are our current numbers today for each grade level. So, we are at 374 total, and you can see the numbers. I'm not going to read them over my head. Can you see them? I am very thoughtful about the size of some of our classes. It's a big shift here, and we're waiting to see if there is a group of kiddos that we don't know about coming in, specifically kindergarten and first grade.
That's what I wondered. Is that demographic, or is that kids keeping out of their school as a cohort?
We have called every known individual and every preschool or childcare center that we know of to say, "Please enroll, please enroll." And we even have... We have people on next year's kindergarten list that we know of, but we have not heard from, so we're... We'll see. I'm curious. In terms of just a facilities update, the building is not sealed. We... That was a part of our... One of the ticket items on our capital improvement plan. It will be worked on on April break. Most of our windows have been replaced. That was a part... Also part of the capital improvement plan. I think they still have a couple more to do. The day before February break, you all had voted to support the new building sign out front that Evan Duchette came and presented about. That is gonna go up on Friday, the 22nd, at about 1:00 in the afternoon. We're excited about that. And we're moving ahead, exploring, I think, the HVAC system that John had spoken to everyone about with some ESSER funds and some outdoor pavilions as well. So, we're getting... Finalizing those pieces with the facilities crew. So, that's where we are with that. You had asked about timeframe. There, we had not considered changing the times of the school day. That would need to be a consultation with the union if we were going to change anything. So, those times were agreed upon the summer of 2020, based on the collective bargaining agreement.
All right, that's answered my question. Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions for me?
It's Kelly.
It's Kelly.
All right. Okay.
That's a tough act to follow. Well, I'm gonna go backwards a little bit as well. We didn't have the opportunity to totally close out our winter season, so I wanted to recognize and thank our coaches. And forgive me, I am battling a cold right now, so I'm kinda in and out of the voice, but we were fortunate to gain Brandon and Stephanie Pike and Barbara Kilfoyle and Jeff Kane to take on the four basketball teams, as we had that whole slate wide open. I think our players and our coaches did a great job balancing skills and competition, and they had a lot of fun. I think we had 55 students overall out there for the basketball teams. Our wrestling team really has grown tremendously over the last few years. I am sad to say that coaches Zach Stewart and Brian Lonergan will not be back with us next year, and they are outstanding. We had 21 wrestlers compete this winter and improved a lot and impressed with every event that they wrestled in. I did want to mention that we had three wrestlers compete at the New England Competitions in March, March 12th, at Hannover, Mass, and that was Dominic Ciotti and Taylor Russo from Thornton Central School. They both wrestled really well against tough competition. And we had Ben Valente from PES, and he made the top-six podium, placing fourth overall in his weight class. And a shout-out to the high school civics kids that are here, Katie Samborn, Anthony and Gianni Ciotti. I wanted to recognize those guys, too, because they were there all day for that very long competition into the evening, and were helping to actually coach those kids up, and they did a great job. So, wanted to recognize them. Excuse me. For skiing, Kate Harrington and Luke Wakefield led our Nordic skiers to a great finish. It was actually a very favorable season. We didn't have one race canceled, because we had plenty of snow. Team finished the season at the Sandwich Fairgrounds for the middle school state meet back on January 21st. Our girls' team placed fifth overall out of 23 teams, and the team's scoring there was done by Johanna Wakefield, Claire Guevez, Grace Galvin, and Autumn Lane. And our boys' team finished seventh overall, and scoring was done by Zealan Stocklosa, Colin Lane, Isaac Sun, and Charlie Tamilonas. And then this year, new that they added was some relay races, and our female team of Johanna Wakefield, Grace Galvin, and Claire Guevez took third place overall. So, that was fun. The coaches actually had a relay race, too. Didn't want to talk about it. So, once again, a huge thank-to to all of our student athletes for representing PES so well with great sportsmanship and effort, and our coaches, as always, did a wonderful job, and we couldn't do it without them. And thanks to all of our families as well. And thanks to all of our families as well for continued support. Up to date, spring sports signups were held the week after February break. Sports physicals were offered on March 16th. And spring season all opened up today. We had, we don't have the green light yet to get on the fields just yet. So we were starting off in the gym. And it was really fun to see the kids back in action, a lot of, lot of kids out there. Overall, I think we have 72, 75 athletes participating in softball, baseball, track and field. And with a little more sun, some wind, hopefully we'll get outside soon. Moving on, just some quick updates with our Safety and Joint Loss Committee. We last met on March 9th with topics of review and discussion included going over our crisis team plans, spring bus evacuation, back when it was voting day, dealing with all the voting day traffic flow, and just talking about further safety drills coming up. So we do have a bus evacuation being held on April 15th. And I am working with our local PD and fire to set up the rest of our last safety drills for the year, trying to dance around the testing dates. But we're in good shape.
Thank you.
One last thing I wanted to mention. PTA has been, they got really innovative and fun. They have a staff appreciation monthly, monthly shout outs and they post them in the teacher's room. So, and anyone who gets nominated is recognized and people are excited to recognize each other. So that's been going very well. So thank you to the PTA for that. And they are planning a book fair to coincide with our Gathering of Gratitude, which I believe is June 4th. Second, June 2nd, June 2nd. So stay tuned for some of the details on that. We're working hard. And there is a PTA meeting this Wednesday night, virtually. So please look for the link on our website and attend. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm so happy that you gave us that update because I knew there's lots of good things happening. And I had the pleasure of going to the middle school play twice and it was amazing. The kids did a fantastic job and my daughter had a really fun time. So I appreciate all the hard work that went into it because I'm, it was a huge undertaking. So I just want to fully recognize how happy I was to have arts back after, you know, past couple of years and how nice it was. So thank you for that. So discussion items, lunch pricing.
Sure. So you have a memo in front of you from Dan Rosner, our business administrator. And he oversees the lunch program. And there's a couple of pieces that have come into play over the past couple of years from, due to COVID. One piece, well, both pieces are from that, where we do have to look at raising the lunch price, prices. And this happens usually every other year anyways. So the first piece is the federal government gave waivers for the past two years for all students to have free lunch. So that definitely impacted the revenue that is coming in significantly. That expires in June. So we hope that there's more free and reduced applications that come in, which tie into our federal grants, et cetera. In addition, the cost, the program costs for Cafe Services have been significantly impacted by the labor shortage. We have talked about this month after month of finding support staff from custodians to cafeteria workers has been a struggle, even in our professional positions as well. It's just been a totally different ballgame as far as what's expected for pay especially. So we're looking at the student breakfast going from 150 to 175. The student lunch, and this is all for next year, not, not immediately, 280 to $3, so 20 cent increase. And then the adult breakfast going from 2 to 250. And then the adult lunch going from 350 to 4. So, and then obviously, these prices would not affect anyone that qualifies for free and reduced lunch. That's a whole, whole different piece. So you could either take a look at this over the month or you can vote on it now if you'd like. But that's something that, that I thought would be better to vote on sooner than later, given some of the circumstances.
So my thoughts are, we did this a few years ago when they did the increases. Or does anyone have any discussion about it, any questions about it? Are you ready to vote on it?
I have a question about free and reduced. I remember when this came up a few years ago, we had lost free and reduced status because of the decreased number of applications that came in. Are we going to go back to that kind of, we have to have a certain critical number?
Well, once you hit 40%, and this was several years ago, you qualify as a, as a Title I school. So they can't take that away from you, given the fluctuation in that piece. But it does, the higher your poverty rate, the more federal funds you get in. And typically, five or six years ago, Plymouth would fall around the 40 to 45% where recently it's been much lower than that. And really, it's because nobody has to really apply when it's all, it's free for everyone for the past two years. We really have, and it ties into adequacy as well. So that's the piece that's really concerning for most districts across the state. So we're hoping to get the most accurate count without being too much in your face about it to, because sometimes it is a pride piece as far as filling that paperwork out. So it is confidential, but I'm hoping with the waiver expiring, that we'll have a more of a true answer where our poverty line is and, and what allocations we will get as far as grants, that piece.
How do parents store or, how do they fill it out now?
On paper.
They don't fill it out now, but when we did it before, how will they fill out these forms?
So it's sent home with your beginning of the year packets and it's filled out and turned in in a confidential envelope. We have worked with folks or parents on the phone at the SAU office if they need help with it. That's sometimes the issue is, and so we do whatever we can. We have the forms out at every event that they, somebody can take it, open house nights. But the past two years have really shifted that priority, but we will go back to that.
It's a substantial form. It isn't by no means, there's a lot of language on it and there's a lot of print on the page. It's multi-pages. It's, it's fairly cumbersome, I think, to, to take on.
But we do help out families that have a language barrier or, or reading barrier.
And we send it home in paper. Even when we did digital registration, we sent it home in paper to try, repeatedly.
Have you ever worked with the Got Lunch program that works in the summer?
We, yes, we, yeah, we've started. Jess Marinowski is on the board there, so, yes. And they actually provide food for, not only for their Got Lunch kiddos, but also for the kiddos who come here for summer school.
So on that note, do they have to fill out this form to get onto that?
Separate.
So that's not like?
Got Lunch is a locally.
Get them.
That's local. That's much easier, actually. Just sign up if you need it. If you need it, you get it.
Yeah, there's no major pay part for Got Lunch.
No, I just bought it.
Could get the funds out to people? Because I do some of those deliveries in the summer.
Is there any, I guess my question would be as far as if we're going to vote on this now or later. Are we going to have any additional information or do people just want to?
Think about it or?
Price is going to change. We don't get it. Is this worst case scenario?
Well, this, this is Dan's recommendation based on what we've received for revenue and kind of over the two years of what's happened. And he had a conversation with Cafe Services last week where they kind of determined some recommendations. It's a recommendation that gets us closer, it gets us a little closer. Is it a complete problem solver? No, a solution, no. There still is a risk of deficit.
We have to vote on these before the start of next year.
Yeah. It's just, this is coming in a little early, based on what we've seen for data. Yep.
So this would start the next school?
Next school year.
And is most of the funds, are they going to provide food? Are they, is it because of increasing food prices or is it mortgages?
Really, it's, it's, it's a deficit because we have had no revenue from the food. And then the other one was for the labor because we contract out with Cafe Services.
So are you saying there's no, when we weren't collecting?
So you usually break pretty even. So years ago, when you had your own contract, you had your own person, employee on staff who would do this. And there was a significant deficit.
$40,000 a year.
$40,000 inept in some of our districts, close to $100,000 in deficit. Just, so we've contracted out, we pay, we, we pay them, but it's not, it's never awash. I think the high school was the only one that broke even, which it won't this year because there's no revenue. So it just gets us closer.
Basically, we're losing money on every meal we sell. This will make us lose less.
And food is pretty important.
So are you guys comfortable? Phil, Lamarr, I'm second, Jim. All in favor of the pricing for, the recommended pricing? Say aye. Nay? Same? Okay, perfect.
Thank you. This will be happening in every district too. We have to bring this up.
All right, thank you. Privilege of floor number two. Yes, Mike Guado? Oh, yes. Awesome.
I'm going to get in front of you. All of Canada President, PA, we just want to say on behalf of PA how much we truly appreciated Mike Guado serving our board. It was a pleasure to work with you. So thank you.
So I was just going to say, I wanted to acknowledge a couple things. First of all, Stephanie, congratulations. Good luck. I know you're going to be great. Being in an elected position can be a thankless job, as everybody who's sitting up there knows. I know Zach left, but he probably knows too much in that position. I really wanted to highlight what you all accomplished, Amy, Phil, Frank and Fran, the last couple of years. A new teacher contract, a new faculty contract, a new principal, a new superintendent, all coming on at the same time as a global pandemic. Despite of all that stuff, none of you ever wavered in the focus on the mission, which is get the best education for the kids in the school, the talent clinic. And you did that. And, you know, I think one of the coolest things maybe was vaccinating faculty. Frank, I know you were out there and Kyle, Todd, Kelly, you're all over. Being able to add that layer of protection for faculty staff, which was a pretty cool thing to say we had done. And you remember, it was like freezing cold in March and windy and everyone was blowing all over. And then in April, it was hot and I think we were sweating. But despite all that, I think we vaccinated 600 or something, not only from our SAU, but from the other folks. So thank you to all of you. The other comment I would make to the staff, faculty administration, I continue to be amazed at what you all do. Even pre-COVID, it is amazing the work that you do to educate the next generation. I suspect a lot of parents are like we are, you know, we put our kids on the bus, we drop them off and then we kind of don't worry about them because we know you got it until we pick them up. COVID added a whole nother level of complexity to that. And I remember that summer of 2020, the palpable sensation of, we got to get kids in school, we got, we got to be back in school. Figuratively, I'll kind of move them out of our system to make that happen, despite the fear and uncertainty. Plymouth was open and had school every day for everybody and had sports and field trips. And I think we will continue to see the value of the work that you all did. Headlines in medical journals now are starting to talk about depression and anxiety in children who have had to deal with remote school. So one, you continue to do a great job. Two, you've saved the community probably, I don't know how many hundreds of thousands of dollars in treatment for depression and anxiety in children and all those things. So thank you for what you all do. I know you keep doing good things. You know, it's good stuff. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Thanks, Eric.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? All right, perfect. Everybody sign off on the?
Yep.
I think you're ready. Perfect. All right. And then, maybe can you motion to go into non-public?
I'll second.
Okay. All of you are going into non-public?
Thank you for coming.